A resolution to declare June to be LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Rye. And I should mention that we really have two things to talk about. As this was proposed to me yesterday by Sarah, there was the resolution. And there was also a, an idea for a flag raising. The agenda was written, the agenda legend was written by staff to cover the resolution. Only because I had sent the resolution to staff as the item. But I would like to talk about both the resolution and then the separate idea of a, of the raising of an LGBT flag somewhere in the city. So the, the first item for us to consider and discuss and to, to, to vote on is whether we as a council wish to recognize LGBTQ month. Or recognize the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month as, as further set forth in the agenda package. And if there are comments, I'd love to have them. I, I, I sense that we can get very quickly to a vote on this. But the, the, the floor is open. This is on, on the resolution and recognition only.
Yeah, I'm super supportive of this resolution. I think there's been a lot of great work that's done by a community group that's organic. Genevieve Gilmore, who we talked about earlier, Jennifer, Dr. Genevieve Weber, whose comments I forwarded has, has done a lot of spearheading this in the community. And I think you've probably seen the, the rainbow flags that have shown up on lawns in support of our LGBTQ plus community friends and neighbors. And so I think that being very vocal about this, this inclusion and support is important. And so I would like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that is done. So then there is the idea of an LGBTQ flag raising. And I would have to position myself as initially quite enthusiastic, but then questioning in response to actually staff questions about the, the future, the future of flag raisings. And so the proposal is to put, to raise the LGBTQ. And I see it's got a plus with it in the emails we've received. So I'll articulate that on a, a, a chosen city flag pole. And the concern is that we will have future requests for flag raisings. Raised on behalf of other interests and other groups. And that we will find those discussions and justifications perhaps difficult at times. And we will end up having an extended council practice and flag raisings. I think on the other side, of course, we have all just enthusiastically responded to rec, the requested resolution to recognize LGBTQ plus Pride Month. So I, I think on this particular flag, I think I would recognize where everybody's sympathies lie, but I would ask people to address the issue that I just raised, as well as the flag raising itself and any other issues they think are appropriate.
Sure.
Richard?
Want me to go first? Among the things you said in your statement, Warner, I think under the George Floyd message was that everybody is, should be considered equals. And, and I like that statement that we are all equals. Now to elevate one group above another kind of goes against the statement you made just 10 minutes ago. The, the problem we have is I'm all for flag raising, if you want to do it on the school, the library, some type of non-public property. Because I think this could be a pitfall for us. Because what if someone comes up with a flag raising that we don't agree with? Are we going to have a very public discussion and an argument that we don't agree with your group or your feeling? We have one attachment to our flag, and from my history certainly, right? I think it was Arcadio, Arcasio, who used to work for the Department of Public Works, who pushed real hard for the prisoner of war missing flags. And that came with a city council resolution. And at that time, of course, you know, I'm of that being on age. So I, I, I think that was a very nice and touch moment. The, but now how do we, how do we say you get a flag raising and you don't? I think we should leave the status quo as is. Again, if the school wants to do a flag raising, I'll come. The library, anything that's private property, but on public property, boy, this is a road I don't think we want to go down.
So if I could just, I just want to give a little bit of background on, you know, on, on the, the actual event. So I had seen on an e-blast from, from the town of Bedford that they had had a flag raising to, to celebrate and commemorate LGBTQ Pride Month, which is this month. It was a town initiative. And I just want to be very clear about what is being proposed here. This is not a group or a cause. This is a city declaration of the values that we all hold. This is not elevating one group above another. This is who we are. We are all Rye residents. Some of us are white, some of us are black, some of us are lesbians, some of us are trans, some of us are homosexual. And this is about a celebration of who we are as a community and saying that we stand for inclusion and tolerance. So this is not a, a group sponsored or an event or a, or a cause. So, so that's, that's sort of the background. And, and then in terms of the logistics, we had, I had a few conversations with city staff this morning about where this would, would occur. And I couldn't remember all of the flag poles in town, but there are quite a few. There's one at Rye Rec, there's one across the street from, from the square house. So these are city-owned flag poles. It would be a, a very simple, but a very, very happy event. It would be a celebration of who we are. I mean, it's a wonderful opportunity, actually, after our physical separation, to affirm our solidarity as a welcoming community, saying, hey, we're here for all of you, all of you, whether you are a homosexual business owner or whether you're a lesbian student, we are here, we stand together. We are not talking about groups here, we're talking about us. So that's where it's a little bit different. And that's where, as I explained to a couple of people today, is that I don't see this as a risk of, of opening up the floodgates with groups coming and saying, wait a moment, I want to put my, my arts group flag up, or I want to put my, my, my favorite pet group flag up, or something like that. This is about us as a city and what we stand for.
Okay, so you're going to have the PBA, who's going to put a request? Because I happen to feel this is going to come. We want to flag this, say, Blue Lives Matter. Because there are.
What that means?
Cops, lives matter. There's a lot of people feel their lives matter. Everybody's life matters. So we shouldn't get into, we're making a proclamation, we're agreeing that this is the, the month and we're all behind it. I think using city property is the downfall. I didn't, not disagreeing with the way you're saying it, but where we're doing it is just, you, you gotta, you gotta look at the bigger picture here. We don't want to get into this, the statement that we're making. If the school wants to put it up, I'll come, I'll come. The school's got flag poles too. I don't, I actually, I don't know why the school's not doing it. And, or the.
Not mutually exclusive. I'm, I, and, and actually, White, the city of White Plains, Mayor Roach had a flag raising ceremony, I believe it was last year or a few months ago as well. So there are municipalities that are making this statement of solidarity and a declaration of who we are as a community. That's all, that's all this is. Remember, we're not elevating one group over another. We're talking about our own community, our own resident.
So Sarah, I, I, I think that when other residents come to us, and I'll take Richard's example, we have, we're, we're fortunate to still have police families in Rye. And they come and they press us for this. I appreciate that this was your inspiration based on what you saw happen in a neighboring town. But when other, others of our constituents come to us and say, would you please do this? Don't you think it's emblematic of who we in Rye are, who we as Rye residents are? We're, 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 we're hard pressed. I guess, I guess I would, I would say, we actually have fights going on about who, which not-for-profit is appropriate to rent the sign space in the middle of, of Milton Road and the Boston Post Road. So I, I don't think it's far-fetched that we will find ourselves with, with additional causes. And I say this, and you, you, you know this to be true. My first impulse was, yeah, let's, let's raise it. And, and I hope my position on this won't, won't keep the, the, the pride group from delivering to me the little pride lawn flag that, that they have promised now is in the mail. I'm looking forward to having it and displaying it at, at, at my house.
Yes. I just, I just want to make one clarification again. People are not born police officers. People are not born to have cause. People are born as lesbians. People are born as homosexuals. This is talking about human beings, not a cause and not a, an organization. So we have to separate the two, the two issues here. One is, you know, we have the POW flag. Is that an invitation for other organizations, causes and groups to, to ask to put their flags? That's a, that's a separate conversation and something that perhaps we will talk about in the future. This is about whether we're willing to make an affirmation of who we are as a city, a city that, that embraces its values of equality and tolerance. So that's, I'm, I'm, I've talked too much, so I'm just going to let everybody else.
We, we, we did, we did, of course, just all agree to a resolution that, that does do that. And we're talking about going from resolution to flag.
Ask a question first, because I, just for clarification, like, are there, and if not, should there be maybe, is there like a policy for this? Do we have a policy by which we, what goes up the flagpole and what doesn't? I mean, I, there is, I mean, you can argue about whether or not it's, you know, if someone likes that nonprofit or not, but the rule is you have to be a nonprofit. There are rules around who can rent that Citibank sign.
Resolution, just like with the POW, as, as Rich mentioned, it would be a resolution. That's what we're talking about.
No, no, but, but I guess I'm just trying to think, I am trying to extrapolate this because I, I, I am 100% supportive, I, I think I already said I'm supportive. But I do, I'm, now that this presidential issue is being raised, I am concerned because what if somebody comes up and is, is it with beliefs that they, or a disposition that they, they feel very strongly about? Like, I'm just, I'm worried about the unintended consequences now. And I wish that we had some sort of policy or guidebook.
Again, this is done around, around the country. This is done around the country. This is not about a group. This is about.
No, no, I understand that. You, you've made that point. I'm just, I'm asking, I guess, I'm literally asking that question. Do we as a city have any sort of policy around this? And then if we don't.
The city does not currently have a policy about raising flags. I would liken it most recently to, and this goes back several years, to the city tried to adopt or change our city code with respect to the banners in downtown. And that proved very difficult and cumbersome. So that never, never was adopted by the council. But it was, the, the issues you're dealing with and discussing right now are the same issues the council was discussing several years ago about who they would open the doors to, to fly banners downtown, like similar to the farmer's market.
Kristen, may I ask, may I ask, how many people have we, have come to us and asked us to fly a flag in the last, say, five years?
To fly a flag on a flagpole, I think this is probably our only request.
Okay, so we have one other request that occurred for a POW flag that was granted by the city, who still has no policy. And now we're going to say, you know what? No, we still have no policy, so we're going to just not allow anybody, even though the door's already been opened with the POW flag. I think we open the door for something down the line if we don't address the issue. I think we should have a policy. And I think in my mind, we should approve, for all the reasons Sarah stated, for all the reasons we as people just voted before, I think we should approve this. And then we should set out a policy in the future so that we can ensure that we don't deal with this again. But to not approve this when we've approved something before is, in my mind, as troubling as anything that we could possibly do, especially to this community after what they have been through in the last 30 years. So I would vote for it.
So how do you have a policy? Who, who's going to decide who's the one that makes the decision that we get to raise your flag? I mean, if you want to go through this, I got it, I'm Italian, I was born that way. Can I have my flag up next month? How are you going to say no to me? What's the policy going to say that?
Well, well, Rich, this isn't something that hasn't existed before.
You, it's hard to have a policy because now you're putting someone in a decision-making position about something that really is not our business as a city. The only, if you want to argue, the only flag that should be up there is the United States flag because we are all Americans here.
This, Rich, time, place, manner. We may regulate time, place, manner. We would develop a policy that says you have to file these documents, you have to produce this kind of flag, you may hang it in this location for this period of time. The fact that we have no policy, the fact that we have allowed it in the past, I think is very problematic. To deny this group who deserves a flag as much as any group, if we have a deserve of a flag, is in my opinion, a slap in the face. And I am not going to slap these people in the face. I support this resolution as it's written, but I also would like to see us do the right thing, time, place, manner, regulation in the future.
Okay, so we have a mark on Saturday, Black Lives Matter. I guess we'll have a flag up before we can get this resolution done. It's, you want to go down this road, go right ahead. I think I said enough, thank you.
What, what would, what, what, what others have to say?
I think the timing of this is, is, is really unfortunate that we're, we're, you know, having to decide on this at the last minute. I, I, you know, I, I feel like I'm put in a corner a little bit and that I don't get to, you know, weigh the decision and have, you know, a lot of, you know, thought about this and, and, you know, so I, I, I feel that way about it. But I agree with Pam. I, I think we should agree to this and then set a policy. Because I think that's, you know, I, we, we agreed to the, the, you know, the, the resolution. I think we all believe in this. But I, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a, this is a tough call at the last minute. I wish we just had more time to deal with it.
And I apologize for that. It was, it was absolutely spontaneous on my part. I saw the e-blast come in from Bedford. I contacted the town supervisor. It was, I mean, we're different communities and everything, but it was a no-brainer for them. And I reached out to Josh, who was an enthusiastic yes. And so we sort of, kind of, you know, moved along in, in a fast pace because it was literally just supposed to be this, it is supposed to be this very, very happy celebration of who we are as a community. So, so that's, I do apologize that you had to, you know, kind of scramble to think about it. But it's literally supposed to be a very, very happy event that celebrates and affirms our values of equality and.
May I propose a compromise? Because I think the symbol, the symbolic or the symbolism of raising the flag may be something that touches upon other people that we may not want to, is just an incredible symbolism there. What if we adorned maybe the fireman's circle or maybe the village green or the entrance to City Hall with a couple of the flags that the pride group have been, have been selling? Would that be a, a good compromise so that people know that LGBTQ plus people are welcomed and that we are 100% supportive of them? But we are not necessarily raising a flag until we can come up with some concrete policies for going forward?
Or can I just build on that? Is it possible to, is it possible to pull a policy together quickly? I mean, there's nothing that says we have to raise the flag tomorrow. You could, we could raise the flag next week, right? Like, could we, could we, would, I'm, I'm willing to be involved in that and do some work to figure out what that policy should be. But I feel really good about, I'm just nervous that just because no one's asked before or it's been five years, that given, that given all of the, you know, competing interests and, and whatever, that, that you, we might start to see some in. I just, I don't want unintended consequences that, that we can't.
We can always say no.
Yes, I just.
We can always say no if a, if a hate group comes to ask to have, we can always say no.
A hate group, of course, that would be easy.
No, actually, we can't. We, you can time, place and manner regulate, but you can't make, regulate content.
Then now I'm scared. But then, now I'm very scared about.
No, but that's why we need a policy, Julie. That's why we need a policy.
So then why are we voting on the right policy? Like, I think we should stop this right now.
It's the day.
You can't, you can't. It's already out there. They've already requested it. Denying it is already violating their rights because we have done it in the past. We have no policy in place.
No, no, I'm not saying words. I just want to finish, just want to finish my thought. We can have a policy that would hopefully allow, I mean, I'm, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just saying, I, I am very scared all of a sudden that somebody comes in with something that is, I don't know what, that has, that had symbolism to it, that, that it may not be overt hate, but it undermines something in some way. And then we have to allow that. And so I would really.
Why we need a policy.
Like to say, could we, I mean, there's nothing that prevents us from having another meeting next week just on this issue or, or at a later date? Can't we get together? Like, I, I feel very rushed about this. And I understand it's the whole month. So, I mean, it would be a nice thing to do to raise for like the last, maybe the whole last week of the month or something. Or it doesn't mean that we can't go into July with it, right?
Oh, if I could.
I think, I think, I, I think a policy will be, will, will be difficult to do and may not satisfy us. But I would, I would try that. I am afraid, and I think Carolina was saying, was referring to this, and that a flag raising now will trigger a request for other flag raisings. I, I, I don't think that someone referred to slap in the face. The group did not ask for this. This was something that, that Sarah suggested. It was not something that we, as a council, have really had time to look at and understand the implications of. I, I would say if, if there are people who want to try to work on a policy, let's, let's work on a, on a policy. If there are people who want to revisit the POW MIA flag, then that's a topic that we can take up. How many years has that been up, Rich?
I think it was early 80s, if remembers, 81 or 82.
So here's my proposal. Why don't we, why don't we approve the flag raising? And then in conjunction, Julie's point of, of starting a policy? That's, I think that's, that's a great idea. Because the fact that we don't have a policy, somebody can still come tomorrow and ask to have a flag raising and we're back, we're back where we were. So, so we've already made the resolution, let's have the flag raising. I want to also reiterate, it's, it's not some humongous there. It was literally a 20, 30 minute, you raise the flag, somebody says, probably a high school student makes a few nice words, and everybody's happy and we're affirming tolerance and inclusion. That's it. So why don't we just approve the flag raising and also implement a policy, which is probably a very good idea to Julie's point.
But you're missing the point. Even with a policy, how do you say no? Let's say some idiot comes up and says, I want to put up the Confederate flag. Where in your policy gives you the power to be the judge and jury what someone wants?
Rich, you've already done that by approving the POW flag. It's already out there. It already exists right now. No policy and a flag on the flagpole that is not an American flag. That already is a concern. We should have a policy. I'm in full support of a policy. But we can't say no to having a flag raising when we already have a non-American flag on the flagpole.
The only.
Can, of course.
Nothing on the flag except the American flag or the state flag.
I fully support the POW flag on the flagpole. So, I mean, if we can have that conversation.
Comes down and to get into this issue of how many flags are we going to have? Or as an alternative.
Temporary. This is temporary, Rich.
Oh, there's no such thing as temporary.
No, no, no. This is just.
And we allow people to put their flag on that. The only way this policy works is we erect a new flagpole somewhere in town. The top of it is the USA flag. And underneath that is anybody who wants to use a month for their cause, we can do that. But, but to turn around and say, you can do this today and, and tomorrow, well, we don't like your cause, we're not going to allow this flag, you're opening the floodgates. This is a very public meeting. I can only imagine what's going to happen in the next week for people are going to say, great, I know you've never done this before, but now I want my cause brought up there. It's not temporary.
The floodgates are already open, Rich. Regardless, regardless of whether we approve the flag raising for the LGBTQ Pride Month, if we decide not to do that tonight.
Let's sue us.
And let me just finish. That, the fact that there's no policy and a flag that is not an American flag on the flagpole, it's a very public meeting, as you yourself have raised, groups will come. So that is irrelevant whether there is a June. So that is irrelevant whether there is a June Pride flag raising ceremony. You have just identified, you have just identified that the floodgates are gonna open. You've just done it.
We don't allow this. We don't have any floodgates.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think, I think if we double down right now, we might get. I don't, I don't have enough time. I don't, I, I want to.
Let's just vote on it. Let's just vote and see.
Sarah, can I finish my sentence?
Let's, 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 let's finish our discussion.
I, I want to figure out how to support, I care very deeply about this cause. I don't want it to get marred in some way down the line or, or in our rush to do something that we, we harm other people somehow. So I, I would love, I don't know if you guys are willing to come back on the phone and do a quick meeting next week or whatever, but I will one hundred percent be in any kind of meeting, whatever, to talk about this and see if we can craft a policy. But I would feel much better if we had a little bit of time before we had to decide on this. And, and, and I, it's, I mean, it's not on the agenda, so I don't know that we have to vote on it right now. But I would, I want to just push so we can just think and do it right. I don't want to do it wrong. I want to do it right. Because I don't.
I think it's right, I think it's right to stand up for tolerance and inclusion.
I do too, which is why we do this. Sarah, you can.
I think it's. My opinion.
No, no, don't make this that we're not, that I'm not against, that I'm against this issue because I, I don't feel prepared to vote on something I just found out about.
There's no preparation. Are you for tolerance?
No, 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 it is because we're.
Sarah, that's unfair. That's, that's completely, that is completely unfair.
That's inflammatory.
That's not, that's not right.
I don't agree with you. I'm wrong. I'm Italian.
Sarah, it's, it's not, it's not. Please respect your fellows' concerns and don't belittle them.
I do. I absolutely do. I'm stating what I believe in. That's all. I don't know why that causes offense. All I've done is state what I believe in. I think that this symbol, symbolic raising of a flag.
Yes, please.
It's a happy event.
Sarah, Sarah, you're, 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 you're repeating yourself.
I know.
Anyone, would, would anyone else?
But I haven't, I just want to be extremely clear here. I have not once said to anybody that, that they are thinking or doing anything differently. All I'm doing is affirming how I believe. That's all. And, you know, people can take it or leave it, but that's it. That's all I'm doing.
Um, I think that deliberation for issues like this, even if they get heated, is a healthy part of the process. And I appreciate everyone's comments. I do, however, believe that if we leave this on the table and we say, hmm, yeah, we don't want to do this one because we've done one in the past, but let's just not do this one. Now we need a policy because, you know, it's the gays. Let's not, let's have a policy now. I think we have another problem. And I would prefer working with the community to do a flag raising if I can for the LGBTQ plus community. So what I would like to suggest is that we have a meeting with them and we talk to them and we let them help us come up with an alternative if a flag raising isn't on the table. And I would also like to see a resolution where we simply remove all flags so that we are consistent in our policy in the future. And I think that's a sad thing to do because I happen to believe, you know, I'm of the generation where many people went to Vietnam and I feel quite badly about that. But I guess that's where we are at this point. That's my synopsis of what has happened here. I think we should have a meeting. Sarah, perhaps the GSA from the high school, maybe the Human Rights Commission. Kristin, let's sit down and develop a policy. It's not complicated. It's been done in multiple jurisdictions. That's my comment.
I think this is as involved as I feared when I saw the staff questions this morning that it, it would be. And if I look back on the flag from forty years ago that's up there, I don't see that as setting a precedent that we have to continue. At, at this point, it's, it's, it's virtually in, in, enshrined tradition from many years ago. You don't have to agree, Pam, but please restrain yourself or you can speak after I'm, I'm finished. So I would opt and with full support of the Pride group, but I don't think they should devise a flag raising policy for us as a council. I would opt to say no to this and see if we can develop a policy. And with great respect for the Pride group and again, reendorsement of the resolution that we just undertook. But I don't want to be in the flag adjudication business going down the road. And I don't want to have to create a flag focus in town for different factions to play capture the flag over in, in, in the future. So I would say let's recognize and resolve as we've done. And I think all our hearts are in the right place on the issue. This flag raising was a council suggestion, suggestion of a council person. It was not sought by the group and I hope that the group won't consider it and, and any, any sort of, of diminution of, of our endorsement of, 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 of their being and their rights as human beings.
Kristin, sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, finish, Josh.
So, um, yeah, so I, 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 I would, I, I would propose to, well, I don't know. Do people want to try to do a policy? We, we tried to do a banner policy and failed. That is, a council tried to do a banner policy and failed. If we end up leaving this to a time, place, and manner restriction, then we've got, we're, we're creating a spot for full First Amendment rights on city property. Essentially, a billboard in the form of a flag. If, if we well, I mean, those, those, those are our choices. It's, 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 it's complex. Let me ask, do people want to do a policy? Maybe that's, that's, maybe that's the best way to approach it. And then come to this flag afterwards.
With all due respect, I think we have to vote on the agenda item. I think there has, we have to see if there's.
It's not on the agenda, Pam. That's my.
It's on my agenda list.
The resolution, the resolution.
I had no idea. Resolution, hundred percent. Yes, I'm super psyched. Flags and other things? No idea. No, no time to prepare, nothing.
Oh, it's just the June month.
I, I had, I had suggested reaching out to everybody, but Josh and I thought that it would be, we thought it would be a no-brainer. So anyway, that, that is why, you know, we, we, we really thought this would be a non-issue. So it is, that, that's why it was not. And, and as I said, I apologize that it literally popped into my inbox. I thought it would be a happy gesture. I did not intend for it to become so contentious. I did, to, to answer Josh's question about whether we need a policy, I do think we now do need a policy because we already have a flag on the flagpole. I, I will disagree with Pam that I, I absolutely want that flag to stay. So in a way, I think we need to create a policy to, to address this and, um, you know, and, and future requests because there already is a request out there.
Can we come back to a way to celebrate the LGBTQ community and move on and have the pride flags either adorn the village green, the entrance to City Hall, or the fireman's circle? So we don't lose sight of what we're trying to do here, which is celebrate our diversity and inclusion. And then we can have time, enough time to go over all the details of the pros and cons of having a policy, not having a policy, or because we, this is not something that was on the agenda and it came late to us. Can we just move on and celebrate them?
Carolina, but what, what happens when someone else comes up with a lawn sign type thing? Do, are we saying that lawn signs on city property for different causes, for different recognitions are, are good? I, I don't think we really change the issue.
Yeah, I think that, 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 that is. I mean, that would be like a, that we should visit that whole policy, I guess, is what's allowed on, you know, on lawns, because somebody could come up with a lawn sign too. That's, that's disgraceful. I think, you know what, I think a long time ago, Emily Doran had raised this idea of like, of having ally stickers that would be on, we could put on municipal buildings, we could put it in storefronts and things that, that show that we're, you know, as an establishment, an ally of LGBTQ plus community, right? And I think something like that makes a lot of sense because it shows an allyship with, and, you know, we're a safe place for, for, for people. But I, I just think some thought needs to be given to this. I just, I, I do care so much about this issue. I'm, I'm quite hurt that, that someone would think that I don't just because I want to give some thought to this issue. And, and I, I just, I'm happy to be a part of the conversation for a policy and I'm happy to be part of a conversation to figure out how to celebrate this group, you know, every day of the year, not just, just ceremonially one day. So, um, yeah, I'm just, I'm disappointed in, in some of how this conversation went.
Well, I, I never intended that, but if I did, I'm very sorry because I did not mean to ever say that, or imply even. The only reason that I keep saying the same thing and saying it over and over so I sound like a broken record is that it's, it literally is just a celebration of, of, of right values. That's it. And, and, and I absolutely get that, that it was a last-minute thing. Both Josh and I, we discussed. I actually asked, you know, whether I should, you know, reach out to all of you. And we both thought that it would be, you know, a, a very simple agenda item. But, uh, you know, the, this morning with the, with the questions about the flags, you know, it made us pause. But then we, you know, this would be a city, city promoted event of, of, of tolerance and inclusion and, and a very simple one at that. So that's, that's all we're talking about. This is, this is not about, um, you know, a, a question of, of who, who is for, who is against. This is just a very, very happy celebration that would be very simple to, to put together. And many other municipalities have done this. It's not meant to be a, a big deal in terms of a logistical thing. It's just meant to be symbolic as a way of, of, of having inclusion. That's it.
Okay, so, um, it's not on the agenda as a, in, 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 in any form. There have been different views raised of what we're deciding. I think I'm gonna go first for the question of whether we want to develop a policy. And I don't know that that's something we need to vote on, but have we lost you, Richard? Are you still here?
He lost wifi or he lost connectivity. He's trying to get back.
Okay, so we should pause a second.
I think he's been gone a little while.
There's just a call-in, right? Like, I could send him that?
Yeah. If he can, if he can see that. If he can see.
We have kind of a big agenda. Can we just start moving through it? And when he gets back on, he gets back on. I went off for a while. I came back on and participated. I, I, I would like to get through the agenda. I don't know how late it is, but it's nine-thirty. We started this at five-thirty-ish, whatever, five-fifteen-ish, and we still have a whole bunch of items to go through. Can we just start moving through this agenda?
Okay, so let's, let's table this discussion. And let's, I don't think Richard will, will, will mind. So we, we.